Everyone, if I could have your attention, please. Good evening. Good evening. Supervisor Cardone? Supervisor Cardone? Supervisor Cardone? Okay, welcome all to our September twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting. If we can all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our September twentieth, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees Village of Monroe meeting. Our first order of business this evening is a public hearing introduced with an introductory local law, nine of twenty twenty-two, modifying chapter one ninety-five of the village code water to protect Monbeisha reservoir from contamination. I need a motion to open up the public hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
Second, please.
Behringer will second.
Okay, call a question.
Behringer, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
O'Connor, aye, so carried. Okay, before we begin, I think we have a sheet of signups.
Pull that round.
Okay, before we get started.
Before we do that, I'm just gonna have our council speak to the, to the, to the folks.
So, everyone who wants to speak tonight, there is a signup sheet. I assume that people have signed up to speak. I would just request that the public hearing be ordered and mannerly. The board is here to listen to your public comments, not to engage in a back and forth or answer questions. Please be aware that everything you say is being noted in the record and that the board will consider each and every comment in detail. I would also ask that you keep your comments to, there are a lot of people here that wish to speak, please keep them concise and as brief as possible. If someone else has already made all the comments that you were gonna make when you came up to speak, you might just go on the record, "I'm so-and-so at such-and-such address, and I agree with all the comments that have gone before," and then limit your comments to anything that has not already been said. I'd also ask that you be quiet during this public hearing so that people who are speaking can be heard by everyone. I would also advise you that this board is not going to take any action tonight, and it will keep the public hearing open, and will encourage any written comments to be given to them between now and the next time the board meets, which will be a continuation of this public hearing.
Okay, having said that. No, if anyone has a question, again, going back to what council just advised, we're going to take your questions. Everything is recorded, and every question will be given an answer. It just will not be given tonight. We're just gonna take questions. We wanna get through this hearing and move forward, and everybody will be heard. Everybody's question will be answered. First speaker tonight, please.
First, I would like to apologize in advance because I have a meeting now at the same time across the other side of Monroe. So, I will be leaving as soon as I make my comments. I have spent all of my professional career ensuring the good health and proper care for all residents in the seventh county area. I worked for the New York State Department of Health. I've regulated hospitals, treatment centers, doctors, and at times worked hand-in-hand with the Public Health Department for the state of New York. It really bothers me that some of my neighbors here are not considering the good health of their neighbors. I use the village water. I do not have a well. And I think, when I think about my neighbors who don't seem to give a damn about the rest of us, excuse my language, that they would prefer to put their recreation before the good health of their neighbors is very frustrating. I resent it. I would also like to offer myself, if you have a committee, I would very much like to be on a committee, assuming that committee, if you have a committee, would be people with wells and people with village water to get a greater understanding of where we're all coming from. But again, shame on all of you for being so selfish, being so selfish to not consider the people that use the village water. This is something for our safety and our good health. Thank you.
I would just note to everyone, thank you for your comments, obviously, the board is listening, but please direct your comments only to the board and not to the public. You may say what you like, but please don't direct it to others in the audience. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, council, village clerk, departments, and chief Guzman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanna preface this by saying, I don't believe that anyone in this audience is being selfish regarding the recreational aspect of what their desires are for Lake Monbeisha, as the previous speaker said. I think that's a total falsity. My purpose here this evening is to help create a dialogue between the village and the stakeholders around Monbeisha Lake that have frontage. From looking at the tax map, there seems to be approximately forty-five residents that actually have frontage. On the tax map, some of the properties are pretty small, so it was very difficult to be concise with that number, but I believe there's about forty-five. I think with that many residents able to assist in the protection of the lake as gatekeepers since they're on the lake, it would seem appropriate that negotiations should begin immediately with a committee of those stakeholders with frontage on the lake. Creating fear for the homeowners of punitive measures that restrict their access and threaten the value of their properties just doesn't seem right. If we look at Walton Lake, here's a lake that has public ask, access from various points, residential access from over, over two dozen points, and is still a direct water source for the town of Chester. I know Chester doesn't own that lake, but it's still a similar situation with that exception. Greenwood Lake is also an indirect source of water for residents as well, with similar aspects associated with it as Walton Lake does. I do understand and completely agree with your position that the lake should not be accessible to everyone. The village should have some control over their water source, but they also should allow those with the lec, great, direct lake frontage to have recreational access for fishing, enjoyment, and safety. If there's one private access point that allows someone to access the lake, that person could give someone else those rights as well, so there, there needs to be some serious thought given to that. That said, not allowing a property owner to use a boat for an emergency to protect the life of someone in immedi, in immediate danger doesn't seem justified just because they have the option to call nine-one-one in that situation. And I think that that comment last night was disgraceful, ludicrous, and unfathomable to the residents that surround that lake. I have a few questions and then one more comment. Has the village researched all the deeded rights to the properties around the boundary of the lake and whether residents and their heirs have rights to it? Is the village aware that multiple property lines extend into Monbeisha Lake, giving those property owners immediate access to the lake currently? What is the protective reasoning behind eliminated frontage properties from having access to the lake with boats? Everyone here this evening is in favor of protecting the water source. Everyone wants to prohibit the littering that goes on, yet everyone here also wants to enjoy the lake along their boundaries. I hope this is a start of negotiations to allow them those rights. Thank you all for listening, and thank you for your time.
Stacy McCreary.
Good evening, and thank you to Mayor Dwyer and the board trustees for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening. My business partner, Dawn Tauber, and I have recently purchased waterfront property on Monbeisha Lake. We have lived in Monroe for over sixteen years and are raising our families in this beautiful community. We have reinvested in this community by purchasing property with the intention of preserving the beautiful surroundings of Monroe and the lake. This particular property could have fallen into the hands of a developer who most certainly would not have kept the land with the same integrity in mind. Based on the presentation last night, the threat to the lake is not coming from the homeowners and the recreational usage. There seem to be more significant threats to the lake with recreation usage being the last on the list. Has there been any study done to show the impacts of the recreational usage? We love this town and this lake, and there is a viable solution to maintaining and preserving the character while also allowing the homeowners access to the lake. Please consider the option of permits for homeowners, and let's work together. Thank you.
Dawn Tauber?
I'm gonna withdraw my request and just state that I agree with everything that my partner said.
Larry O'Neil.
My name is Larry O'Neil. I live at Eight Riley Road in the town of Monroe, directly next to the water plant on the north end of the lake. I also work from home and get to experience one hundred percent of the activity that the Water Department facility on Riley Road. According to the twenty-twenty-one DPW water report, there were no contaminants in the water that, that exceeded the regulatory levels. Monbeisha Lake didn't experience a single non-natural contamination level above thirty-five percent of the regulatory limit. If you're claiming that the current recreation permission is causing contaminants, there's no evidence of that. The Village of Monroe has destroyed Water Plant Road and the bridge over the spillway to Riley Road. Both of these are private roads where the residents would have to bear the cost to repair them. The village by far has the heaviest vehicles that access and use these roads, dump trucks, trailers hauling excavators and harvesters, and excavators turning around in front of the water plant chewing up the road. The activity to harvest starts as early as six fifteen on some mornings, disturbing local residents, and it's completely unnecessary and uncalled for. The harvester pilot has also been telling people that they can't boat or fish on the lake when it's still permissible. You guys haven't taken a vote yet. Trustee Carl and Mayor Dwyer, you attended a meeting on invasives about the lake about two or three years ago, and said that you needed our help. You wanted our help to be your eyes and ears on the lake, that you would get us stickers for our boats and make sure that we would have lake rights, however, we would have to watch for other boats coming from other bodies of water. Is that correct? That we would have to agree to only use our boats on this lake and this lake alone, and everyone in that room agreed at that time. What happened to that plan? What did you do about that? Because there's no stickers been issued. As someone who sees all the activity at the northern end of the lake, the only people bringing boats to Lake Monbeisha on the north end of the lake from other bodies of water are the village and lots of other people that seem to have a key to that gate, especially after hours and on weekends, as recently as this past weekend. Today, my wife and I went to Village Hall and applied for a recreational permit for boating and fishing. We were told by the water treatment plant operator that there are no permits are being issued. The village clerk had stated that she had never been asked to issue one before, prompting the call to the water treat plantman opera, operator. If you wanna have good neighbors, you have to be good neighbors. At yesterday's meeting, the water treatment plant operator cited a test last year was conducted to see if there was any volume loss or leaks between the intake and the meters at the houses, and the test revealed an eighteen to twenty percent loss, which I understand is supposed to be better this year. You don't know the condition nor the location of the pipes that feed the treatment plant. You're losing the battle on the invasives at both ends of the lakes as the water level goes down each year. You admitted that just yesterday, and you use one point two million gallons a day for a reservoir that has a capacity of one point five million gallons. Room is burning, and you're giving out parking tickets. Pay attention to the big issues and leave little things like recreation that are not harming anybody to us. Thank you.
Mary Ann Bishel?
Good evening. Thank you so much to Mayor Dwyer and all the trustees, especially trustee Carl, for all the work you've been doing on the lake. It's very important to all of us in this room, as you can tell, and we know that you've been taking a lot of efforts to remove the invasive species and other things on the lake. Also, thank you for the presentation yesterday. It was very informative, and it was good to know that the lake is clean and that there are no current contamination issues, and that the Barton, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, Barton and La Jardice consultants found no contamination from boats. It's also good to know that there will be a resident from Lake Monbeisha on the Water Protection Stakeholder Group. I'm happy to volunteer to do that, but would be glad if someone else were also interested. So, just a couple of points. Mayor Dwyer, I promised you these codes, and I'm sorry I couldn't get them to you earlier. So, there is some confusion about the, how old the code is. So, basically, the code that we have now, as it says on your website, it was in effect since nineteen seventy-seven, and here's a copy. Do I give a copy to anyone? There's copies for each of you, and then I was able to find through a bunch of research through the New York State Library, a code from nineteen eighty-two that reads the exact same way. And then what happened in two thousand and eleven, I had to look into it, was basically the word Department of Public, the words, Department of Public Works was added before water superintendent. So, maybe before two thousand and eleven, there was not a Department of Public Works, but that was one change. So, it was like a slight change, but the same thing about the boating and needing permits, that was all the same. Another tiny change is it says one thousand linear feet, and the word order of that was different. You don't need that because that's on your website, but we prepared it anyway. So, let's see. I'm the person that, with other people, went around the lake and talked to everyone. I went on Orange County GIS and got the names of every resident so that I could talk to them, and this was really a wonderful, wonderful experience because I've loved the lake since I was really little. My parents adopted me, and one week after they adopted me, they brought me up to Camp Comfort, which we now call Nettie Fred Cooperative Corporation. My mom and dad had, my mom had been up there in the late forties with her parents, with my grandparents, and my parents were dating when they were fifteen and brought my dad's family up, and they each have a bungalow in our, in our community. So, basically, I grew up with ancestors already there, and the people who are there are like, like four generations of families. So, anyway, the point about the lake, I learned how to fish when I was really little with my grandfather. It's a deep spiritual ancestral connection. I learned how to, like, really, like, honor the fish and honor nature from my dad and my grandfather. I could catch fish, I could kill, kill them in a humane way and start to clean them, take the scales off when I was five years old. So, there's a really strong connection to the lake and to my family, and to the other residents who also love the lake. So, what was great about going around the lake was to meet other people who love the lake in different ways and similar ways, and I know that all of you care about the lake because of many reasons, but also because of the village residents who drink the water. So, it kind of warms my heart that we're all here together. Maybe it's a reminder, I'm saying it to myself more than others, that, like, we really are all in this together, and we really do make things better when we work together. We're smarter when we put our heads together and see what we can leave for our children, as a Native American man said. So, I have, I brought all those petitions, or they were dropped off at your office. One other person, I didn't wanna leave her name off because her, her husband really loved the lake, and he passed away, and she got her name in late, so here's a petition. And then I have a picture of what we do to manage the weeds on our lake, which is go out with canoes, and we fill the canoes up with the invasive water chestnuts and take them out, and this is something that some of our residents do for hours on end. So, I have two pictures for you that you can pass around. Just to let you know, I know you guys received information from me, and, and you know how much I care about the lake, but anytime I would go out on a boat or walk in the woods, I always had a plastic bag with me, and I would pick up any refuse. So, I, I do think that the residents, we can work together, we could have, say, a liaison on the north, on each side, the east or the west, or the north or the south, however it's named, and these liaisons could manage some of the issues that you guys are having and keep, make the lake better. So, I hope that you will consider postponing the boat, the vote for more than two weeks. Two weeks is not a very long time for us to work together, to come up with some solutions to what could be, I mean, it's been a rough summer, right? And so, people have lots of different emotions, and if we could have more than two weeks, I think we'd do a better job of coming up with some solution. So, thank you again. I really appreciate your work, and you're listening to us.
Hi, my name's Rob Rosborough. I'm with the law firm of Whitman, Ostrom, and Hannah. I've been retained by the NFCC to try to advocate for their interests here, and, and you've heard so far tonight, very compelling interests in continuing the recreational activities that have been ongoing at the lake for more than fifty years, and that's a pretty powerful history. Even from the, from the meeting last night, the board's engineering consultant acknowledged that the drinking water in the village is very clean, considered very clean, there's no contaminants, there's no real risk of contamination now from the current activities, and that's under the current law. The current law prohibits swimming and bathing, it prohibits the use of gasoline-powered boats, it only permits any other boating with a permit from the village. The village has already has significant regulations that has done what they were supposed to do. It's kept Monbeisha Lake clean, and it's kept it a viable drinking water source. With that in mind, there needs to be a balance struck with the rights of the, the property owners here. The interest that the village has in keeping the water source clean and usable is certainly a notable one, but so is the recreational rights. In order to be able to take those rights away entirely, which is what this law proposes, there has to be a factual and scientific support for what you're trying to do. Otherwise, the decision that you'd be making is an arbitrary and capricious one, and that is a problematic from a village powers standpoint. You want to make sure that what you're actually outlawing poses the risk that you think it will help to, to fix, and it doesn't. There's no evidence, even the consultants last night admitted that, there's no evidence that the limited recreational boating and fishing that is permitted on the lake now has caused any issue at all. So, really, this is a, a solution that's proposed in search of a problem. It's a hypothetical problem, not a real one. And in that type of balance, this balance needs to weigh in favor of further communications, further studies with the residents as stakeholders to ensure that the proper balance is struck. My, my clients have, like they said, you've heard many comments already, been stewards of this lake for more than fifty to sixty years. They care about the lake, they care about the cleanliness of the lake, they care about their property values and the, the rights of everyone around there, and the balance of the village, this law proposes to strike, is not the right one. So, in, because further study is needed to show there's actually a need for this law in addition to what the village code already prohibits and permits, we'd ask for, like Mary Ann said, much more than two weeks is needed to do these. So, we respectfully request that you postpone the, any vote on this until there's further study done, and you can actually establish that the limited recreational activities that are proposed to be banned is causing some sort of problem in need of fixing. Thank you.
Alex Rivera?
My name is Alex Rivera. I live on Monbeisha Lake. Thanks for the opportunity to speak before you. First, I wanna respectfully clarify two things up front. I don't think the folks behind me or myself would consider that we have lake rights. No one's saying that. We're just saying that we wanna humbly be able to use the lake. That word has been thrown around extensively, and I just wanted to clarify, I'm not here to say I have lake rights. Secondly, I also wanna recognize that I'm sure most of us know the municipalities with lakes or reservoirs that serve as a water source do allow recreation on their lake, while others do not, and I recognize it's the sole discretion of the governing body of this municipality, you, to make that decision. I live on Monbeisha Lake for eleven years. I've enjoyed an occasional ride on my kayak during the summer and fall just to relax and decompress after a stressful day. I've met and waved at friendly neighbors who own houses on the lake, who have been boating since back in the fifties, and they too enjoy the lake. Not once in eleven years have I seen lakefront homeowners bathe or swim or bring food or beverages or operate gas motors on the lake. My point is this, those who own lake property intuitively know to protect the lake by keeping the lake clean, scanning the lakeshore to remove debris left behind by trespassers, and that's the operative word, I'll get to that in a second. I've personally circled the lake to remove debris myself, left by trespassers who cross over into Sharon's Cove and have an impromptu barbecue. Also, I've removed water chestnut plants that were too shallow for the harvesters to be effective. It's called pride of ownership. We're all discreet, and we have the best interests of the lake in our hearts. Now, with the increase in the harvester activity since twenty twenty, there has been conflict between the boaters and the harvester on the lake while it's operating, but that shouldn't nullify an opportunity to continue and enjoy the lake. I would respectfully request we take a brief period to consider next steps, specifically whether we change the code that was implemented in two thousand and eleven, allowing boats to be launched on Monbeisha Lake, or we create a new code that makes everyone happy. My humble suggestion for your consideration is as follows. A boat launch permit. No one on the lake during DPW maintenance, i.e. the harvester, the algae, algae treatment spreader, et cetera. East Monbeisha Lakefront for homeowners only. That will cover the issues of control, trespassing, and contamination prevention. Why? Because in order for anyone else to be on the lake, it would constitute trespassing. Sharon's Cove is already covered with signs, and the gatehouse has a bunch of signs. So, number three, we must provide government-issued IDs and cross-reference it with our tax map so we prove that we're residents. A permit sealed in a waterproof laminate with a stamp by the DPW superintendent. This is just an example that we must produce when we're on the lake if any police officer asks us for ID. No bathing, no swimming, no gas-powered motor, no food, no beverages, no containers. And we'll sign a disclaimer that we acknowledge, so nobody tries to grandfather it, that we have no lake rights. We never did, and we never will. And the court permit can be rescinded by the Village of Monroe officials if any of the rules are violated. And then finally, gatekeepers. Four residents as volunteers, two on the west Monbeisha side and two on the gatehouse side, that are the eyes and ears for the village. Sharon's Cove is covered with the signs, the gatehouse is covered, but there's vulnerable spots. Across from me, I've seen people carry boats through the woods, two hundred yards, and launch their boats. I would gladly volunteer to notify authorities if I witness trespassing. I'd like to close with a quote from the former CEO of Best Buy, Hubert Jolie. He turned Best Buy around at a time when they had serious financial headwinds and a very close to going the way of Circuit City, Nobody Beats the Wiz, and Sixth Avenue Electronics. His first week as CEO of Best Buy, he addressed the shareholders and said one thing that to this day is credited with turning Best Buy around. He said, "Best Buy is not in the business of selling electronics. They're in the business of making their customers happy." So, I don't think it's a stretch to conscientiously ponder a solution that everyone can accept and makes everyone happy. Thank you to the mayor and the village trustees for your service and dedication in making the Village of Monroe a place to be proud of. Thank you.
James May?
Just real quick, sir, if anyone would like to leave their comments so that they can be input into the record, I think the village would appreciate that.
I'm James May. I live on East Mon, East Monbeisha. I've been in the area for about thirty, forty years, and as I listened to last night's presentation, the water quality of the lake is good. It's not bad, and I guess we, homeowners, like to keep it that way also. And I guess we, homeowners, like to keep it that way also. And as I know, it's all the reservoirs, New York City reservoir, Tuxedo Reservoir, Walton Lake, they allow recreation boating, as long as it's regulated, as long as you issue permits and have the boats been cleaned and certified and there's no contamination. I understand everybody likes to have clean water. I do too. But I notice all the development in the northwest, all the water quality coming to the lake is having more phosphorus. It's not from the boating. As the last five years, your lab tests hasn't been any declaration of water quality. So I don't know what you try to do to us, saying you can't have boating, because we would like to protect the lake just as you are. Now, so I just hope that we could work with you guys to have permits, just like the rest of the New York City reservoir and other towns nearby could use the boats. I think fishing would not contaminate your water. Thank you.
Allison, please.
Decline as well.
Decline, okay. John?
Decline as well. Thank you.
Okay. John Fanner?
Hello, my name is John Fanner, and I have a summer bungalow on the northeast corner of the lake. Homeowners around the lake are not citizens of the Village of Monroe, but we are good neighbors. I think we're very good neighbors. We support businesses in the village by dining there and shopping there. And we've also supported your efforts, as many others have said, by removing the invasive water chestnuts by pulling them by hand and putting them into rowboats. And we started doing this a year or two before the village boats started doing that job. And by the way, the picture that Mary Ann gave you of a rowboat full of water chestnuts, that's me in the boat behind the water chestnuts. And we continue to do this in an area that is too shallow for the village boats to enter. If we were not able to go out in that area in our boats and continue to pull weeds, those weeds would continue to grow and inevitably spread to the rest of the lake. One good thing that came out of your proposed legislation is that it energized homeowners around the lake, the reservoir, to get together and discuss how we feel about the reservoir. And we are unanimously agree that we support your goal to keep the reservoir as pristine as possible, because that's what makes it attractive to us. And, but we don't believe that eliminating rowboats from the reservoir could contribute to that goal. There is no evidence whatsoever that boats that always remain on the reservoir would affect either water quality or invasive species. We understand that boating became an issue when some individuals were on the reservoir in the vicinity that the weed boat was working, and they refused to get off when told to do so. Now, one story we heard, I don't know if it's true or not, was that there is an Airbnb home on the reservoir and that these individuals were Airbnbers. If that's the case, I would support legislation to prohibit Airbnbs on lakeside homes. I would also support a rule requiring rowboats to remain at least 500 feet away from the weed boat when it is out there. The, I would, it would seem also that it would be helpful for the village to publish on its website a schedule of what parts of the reservoir the weed won't be working on on a day-to-day basis, so that the homeowners around the reservoir would know to just stay off it when the weed boat is working in their vicinity. I know that you're concerned about enforcing regulations such as this. I would support the village deputizing a member of the weed boat crew to give summonses to anyone who violates rules about staying a certain distance away from the weed boat. I would also support having a boat permit fee that would more than cover the administrative costs of administering the fee. I think the above ideas would be a cost-effective way to accomplish the village's goals. In conclusion, I started by saying that homeowners around the reservoir are good neighbors to the village and demonstrated how they support the village both economically and environmentally. It is generally agreed that neighborliness is a two-way street, and I am hopeful that you will demonstrate that you agree with that. Thank you.
I'm going to ultimately decline, just to give you my right. I handed it to, emailed it to Mayor Barbe before, but pretty much you have most of my points, because you already have a code in place that gives you flexibility to manage this property. The language you're looking to put in removes that flexibility, and I just don't see a need for it. I think, as you said, it's a solution looking for a problem. It makes no real sense to change the code.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Cast-Crudisco. I grew up on the lake. When I was five years old, my parents bought a bungalow in Camp Cornish. It got burned down after we had it for two years. So at seven years old, we wound up in Camp Comfort, which is the Nettie Fred Corporation. I am 80 years old, so I've been up there 73 years. And I love these people, I love the lake. I live in Monroe now, but the lake is still my lake, no matter what. And the 11 children I grew up with all those years, I spoke into eight of them. There were 11, I spoke with eight. They are so upset with this situation, because they come up for the Labor Day party and they see all these people again that they love. It's like a family, and you're going to wreck it with no boating, no fishing, ice skating. We used to skate from one side of the lake to the other side, and we used to go to Hartman's and get a hot chocolate and then ice skate back. My brother, Dokma, Henry, Carly, Robert, all the young kids, we had a ball on the lake. I don't know why you want to stop this. It's not that they're hurting the water, they're not doing anything to it. They're helping the water, and they help keep the lake stable, because they go around, they collect the debris. Even when I was a kid, we were told we could not put anything into the lake, we couldn't do anything. No papers were allowed. If we had a piece of paper or a candy bar, we had to bring it back to our parents. If we didn't, we'd be in trouble if they found out we left it on the ground. You have to realize that growing up as a child, it was the best place I could have been. I lived in the city. It was a place to get away from the city atmosphere. And all my friends, like I said, and I'm still in touch with them, they feel the same way. And I've called all of them over this situation, and they all agree with me. Just telling you.
Hi, my name is Natalie Brown, an end user of the water system. I live in the village. I want to drink clean water, I want my kids to drink clean water, and regulations will ensure that continues. We've been very lucky to have clean water in Monroe, but we don't know what the future holds. These regulations are happening everywhere. This is what the Department of Health and the DEC recommends, and the village is just following those guidelines. I applaud the village for taking proactive steps to protect the drinking water. People who are speaking out against the regulations don't drink the water. If you buy a house on a reservoir, you know you bought a house on a reservoir. And this was eventually going to come at some point, because it happens, and it's happened in New York City a long time ago, the City of Peekskill, so it was going to come to Monroe at some point. When you're choosing stakeholders to be on your committee, please be reminded that there's 12,000 end users in the village and the town and 45 lake residents.
Okay. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak, I ask that we keep the motion to adjourn and keep the public hearing open at this time. I need a motion.
Berenger will make the motion.
Second.
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, next order of business, the public hearing, introductory local law number 10 of 2022, amending chapter 200 zoning to vest authority to perform the Monroe balancing test to the Village Monroe Board of Trustees. Modification of chapter 195 of the village code, water to protect the Monbasha reservoir from contamination. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize.
This is the Monroe balancing?
Yes, sorry. Tend to be robotic about it. Okay, next public hearing is a local law number 10, vesting authority to perform the Monroe balancing test to the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Carl will make that motion.
Second.
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to...
Brief summary of what this is.
Yeah, you can do a brief summary. Sure.
Okay, so this local law vests authority in the Village of Monroe to perform a balancing of the equities test for any other municipal entity that owns property, for example, in the village and wants to develop that property. So this board would normally, normally, that other municipality is subject to village zoning law. There have been cases where the other municipality has usurped the authority and said, "We can build this, or we can do this, or we can allow this to happen, because we're a municipality and we don't have to follow your zoning law." Now, they base that on a case called Monroe, the County of Monroe v... Oh my gosh, wait a minute.
Rochester.
Rochester is a very famous case. I should know that like that. So, anyway, it used to be that if you were doing a proprietary function, for example, a municipality that provided water or sewer, and you wanted to build something in another municipality for that proprietary purpose, you were exempt from zoning. This case changed that to the point where it required the municipality to decide whether or not it was a valid public purpose, and if it determines that it's a valid public purpose, then they could, it could be exempt, the other municipality could be exempt from zoning. The problem is that the court never identified who had the right to do that balancing test. This board, having been faced with that situation, decided to implement a local law, which they are going to talk about tonight and which the public hearing is open for, that says, "If you want to build in the Village of Monroe, you have to follow our zoning, unless we, the village board, go through the balancing of the equity under the Monroe balancing test and allow you to be exempt and actively exempt you from the zoning. Otherwise, you're subject to our zoning law, you're subject to our building inspection, you're subject to the rules that anybody else would be subject to." So that's the basis for this, the introduction of this local law.
Does anyone wish to speak about that matter, or have any questions in understanding what we're discussing here? Okay.
Can we just give it a couple minutes?
Yeah, let's wait a couple minutes and then we'll move forward.
Does this have anything to do with somebody else, like they want to develop, or, like 500 houses or something might be developed? Do they take into consideration that we probably don't, won't have enough water for more people, more houses? Because yesterday's meeting, they said we have more water being used than is coming in through the spring, so shouldn't the village not allow any more housing developments?
That's really not...
Is that a different subject?
That's a different subject.
Okay.
This only relates to other municipal entities that own property in the village, lease property or whatever, and want to do something.
So if the town of Monroe, for instance, owned a piece of property here within the geographical bounds of the Village of Monroe, we have a balancing test as to whether or not they're coming in and owning their property, obserps our right to use the way we see it fit based on our zoning as opposed to what they want?
Oh, because, but they might want to have, put a whole development up in that particular plot.
Different, that's outside of the Village of Monroe.
Oh.
And they're not putting it up. They're developing it through some private entity, I suppose, right?
Okay, I just want to make sure. Is there any other time that they discuss this thing about all the developments as being, that people might be proposing?
No, not with us?
That's not in the village, it's in the town?
They haven't, no, they haven't addressed us at all, just tonight, the first time I've seen a supervisor, I think, since 2018 here.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you very much, okay.
Thank you.
Let me give you an example of what's happening in another municipality that I represent. So the town owns property within the village. It's the town DPW site. Verizon wants to put a cell tower on the town DPW site. Normally, they would be, well, they are subject, in their local telecommunications law, the village makes everyone subject to zoning except itself. So the town has requested the village to perform a Monroe balancing test to determine whether or not that cell tower, if it is erected, will benefit the village, and if it does, to what extent? And if it's a great extent, and the village decides that it would be a public purpose to have that cell tower erected, then the village would be able to exempt the town from zoning law under the Monroe balancing test. So that's just kind of an example of how this actually works in reality.
Okay, anyone further? Questions, comments regarding this particular local law? Okay. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing on this local law number 10 of 2022, amending chapter 200.
Carl will make that motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Roy, aye, so carried. Now, the next order of business is a discussion that was prompted by an opportunity, the state of New York gives municipalities the opportunity to apply for funding on a total array of things, right? So just yesterday, this board had applied, not just yesterday, but many months ago, we had applied for a fund, from a fund, from our local state senator, James Kufus, to apply to have our ponds dredged. In this case, our South Pond. We applied for it, we were awarded the grant, it's a matching grant, the state senate's going to give us $565,000. The Village of Monroe is going to front the rest of the money, based on some analysis that's been done and completed, including environmental, DEC work. It's very onerous and it's, there's a lot of diligence that goes behind it. So we're moving forward with it, our consulting firm and so forth. So because of these types of funds, communities which could not fiscally do this on their own have opportunity to tap in through grant writing and so forth. So this latest initiative is called the DRI, which is, stands for Downtown Revitalization Initiative, and then Forward New York. These are two pools in the state of New York. These are two pools in the state of New York, and they specifically, um, uh, address downtowns in, in communities, towns, villages and so forth. And we have a downtown, as everybody knows, and, uh, in our downtown, we'll call it, say, from Airplane Park down through the waterfall out here on Stage and Seventeen M, and as far down as the racetrack, uh, down off of Maple Avenue, and as far as up is Roscoe Smith. That's considered our downtown area. And, um, so when I wrote, we have a grant writer that writes for us, and when I wrote to him and said I wanted to apply this opportunity and see what we could do with it, it's a very difficult task. I mean, uh, the city of Kingston was awarded it, uh, the city of Middletown was awarded it, I think the city of Peekskill was awarded, New Rochelle, some big guns out there that have, that have been applying and winning the grant. It's a ten million dollar award, and it affects a lot of opportunity, like, uh, do our bike trails, which we call affectionately the bike trails, out around the lakes, uh, that could be upgraded and cleaned up and so forth, lighting out there, uh, the dredging. So, I made some lists here, and I'm just gonna share them, and then I asked the board to share some of their ideas, and, and we're gonna move along with it. This is actually, uh, a requirement, uh, it's open to the public after I speak about it, anybody could talk about it, you're welcome to come on up and, and have a, a conversation with us on that matter. So, um, I made some suggestions, and I'll just read them and then see if it kinda rings for you folks. So, incentives to renovate the passages in the downtown buildings is a major concern, some of them in really poor condition. Uh, village parking lots need to be addressed in the redesign and the aligning of the adjacent areas for better parking and better flow. Uh, design and build a new bus terminal depot at the front of the commuter parking lot, allowing for safe transition of riders, safe passage of cars along the Mill Pond Parkway, with a seasonal weather shelter for commuters. Now, anybody that commutes to the city by bus here in the village knows that, um, you stand in the rain and the bus picks you up on the Mill Pond Parkway. So, um, I think it's high time that we find a solution to that. Uh, when you return back from New York and you come into the village, uh, the bus is very big and very large, and it pulls over by the bus depot where the, uh, the smoke shop is, whatever you call it. And, uh, the, the rear end of the bus sits out into the lane, so what happens is now cars now have to go around that, and it's kinda difficult to do that, and, but they do it because they need to move on going where they're, where they're going. And, uh, so I wanna try to find a place that they can pull in, I'm always gonna call it the depot, just to pull in safely off the road, allow the passengers, safe passage off the bus and into the parking lot. We have two commuter parking lots to the left, uh, outside of where Ross Lumber, if anybody knows where now Beck's Hardware is. Uh, and that's a real big piece for us, and I, I think it's a really great initiative that we should look at, uh, which, um, allows our, our, uh, commuters who have commuted, you know, it's a twelve-hour day, I, I used to do it, and I know what it's like, and it's a very difficult day at six in the morning in the snow to, to find a parking spot and then to come home, find your cars, eight inches of snow on top, or the rain and so forth. So, I think these are different places that I think we really could, uh, show initiative, and I think is well embraced by, uh, the, uh, the scoring team and the people that do review these applications. Uh, accessibility from these parking lots into our downtown should be a warm, friendly, well-lit, informative and inviting through our current alleyway. We have an alleyway we call Green Road, or, you know, everybody's got a different name for it, but it's right there in the middle, it's between what was the old, uh, John DeAngelis Hall and, uh, Smith and Strebe Hardware, and, uh, that actually conveys you right into the two parking lots. But it's not user-friendly right now, and I want it to be. I want people that, when they park there or they bike there, come off the trail, that they have a place to place their bike, park their car, we have electric station coming in, and you can do all those things, and then come in and then get to a board that tells you, "Hey, this is what's going on in the village, come on in." And it should be inviting, maybe some murals, we have a great young fellow, not young fellow, but my age, Stevie Babcock, who's been painting all over the village, and he's done some really amazing work for us, uh, for anybody that wants it in the downtown. So, things like that, we want this to be really, really a cool and fluid aesthetic, uh, so, and then my board has suggested, uh, lighting around the walking paths, uh, large directory LED, LED-based out, uh, by the, uh, fireman's, uh, possible and/or the mayor's monument that tells folks, "Here's what's going on," and we can do this for the public as well. So, if you have an initiative and you'd like it publicized for the good of the community, then we could do that, it's a color type of environment, so that's a great idea. Uh, permanent stage or concert stage with lighting and audio, uh, walking bridge across the pond for fishing and cutting across the other side. So, before my time, uh, and I'm sure everybody's here, uh, there was a bridge that would cross over the South Pond and connect from, we'll call it the Bridge Street line onto Mill Pond Parkway. And, uh, I think it would be really cool to have something like that. So, it's a bit of a wish list, but, uh, again, it brings that interest, that it just kinda tweaks people's like, "Hey, that's pretty cool, I like that," right? Uh, lighting along the Heritage Trail on the village property bounds, we're really fixated on that, it's a, it's a, it's a county park, uh, but on the village ends, we're very diligent about this. So, my DPW goes out, they clean it, they mow it, they're constantly looking for opportunity to do certain things. Uh, we work with the county DPW and the Parks Department out there, Jim Brooks, great guy, and, uh, we're always trying to find ways to collaborate to make a much better environment where we control, which is from, uh, the bridge at two oh eight, down up through, uh, Clock Street down at the other end of the village. Uh, the shorelines of the ponds, uh, fountains in the ponds with lighting, we used to have a pond, a fountain on the north and the south, right now there's plans to put five in total, two and three, uh, to not only aerate the ponds, but also to create a great visual with lighting, and that's in the works. Um, upgrade the electricity around the ponds, one of the challenges is every time we have an event to do something, we don't have the necessary electric that we need, and we've gotta invest and try to get that cleaned up. If anybody has seen, uh, we call them the lollipop trees out there between the ponds, uh, all the lighting is brand new, and it's just stunning to look at in the evening. So, if you haven't seen it, drive home that way tonight. Uh, there's been discussions about refillable water bottle, uh, bottle stations, uh, new business signs for the downtown. Uh, two years, three years ago, we did a, uh, Downtown Revitalization Plan, uh, Jeff Wilkinson, who was an architect that we chose, to help us to kinda model a downtown, what it could be, what it should look like, based on conversation, based on, uh, a, um, a study that was done, based on a questionnaire, and basically he came up with a whole, uh, format, and it's on our website if you wanna go out and take a look at it, uh, including, uh, we also received from Senator Scoofus an opportunity, if anybody remembers the old train station down here, it'd be really cool to find a, find a way to frame that in up here as the Village of Monroe. So, anybody knows the old train stations, and they had the metal roofs on it, and then they had the placard hanging in the breeze, the Village of Monroe in this case, and maybe some tables underneath, maybe a water fountain, maybe some things of interest, including what's going on in downtown, right within the confines of that space. It's also on our website, you should take a peek at that. Uh, pedestrian docks for ice skaters out on the ponds, repaving the walking paths, uh, cleaning up the alleys as I spoke about, uh, an audio system for the downtown, so obviously we're doing right in the middle of that downtown, new sidewalks, new lighting, uh, we'd like to see some sound out there, so seasonally that can really project, uh, really good energy and, and, you know, I think people would really receive it well. Uh, the tree planting, uh, which is actually gonna be boxed tree locations, uh, that they could be moved seasonally back into storage. Uh, we need to create some sort of a, uh, box culvert bridge out on, onto the gazebo on the North Pond. Uh, anybody familiar with the Masters, uh, knows that, uh, Hopscot Bridge out there? I forget the hole it's on, anybody a golfer? No golfers here, okay, well, there's a- I'm sorry?
I'm a fisherman, or a fisherwoman, not a-
Are you familiar with the bridge, the Masters?
Yes.
So, you know what I'm talking about. So, uh, that would be really cool to have out there, we've had some discussion about that. Uh, rehabilitating the nine eleven memorial, um, it's very, very poignant and very, very dear to us, uh, here in the village. The, the actual gazebo, or whatever people wanna call it, uh, is a bell tower, and that bell tower came off the Presbyterian Church.
I have a question on that, that wasn't even planted with mums for the nine eleven. I was very disappointed in it, and I'm very disappointed about the five decks that the garden club, which I worked on-
Sure.
Around the pond, the four of them, they didn't get planted, no weeds were pulled, once they pulled the weeds, and then they never went back to doing anything about it.
Sure.
The group, the garden club that I was in, we're all in our eighties, nineties, we can't do it anymore. It, I mean, we did it as volunteer work, so I don't see why the highway department or some other organization couldn't have stepped up and done something about it. I mean, it really didn't look nice this summer at all, I mean, very disappointed, and especially that the nine eleven had nothing in it, no flowers, the petunias were dead, and nothing replaced them. I mean, how could you have a nine eleven memorial and not have flowers out there?
Sure.
I don't get it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Phil, Eleanor, um, as anything goes with civic organizations and any opportunity to, uh, do things, uh, that's on the wane, right? You and I both know it, 'cause I was part of the garden club.
I know.
All right, so on my knees.
I have no problem with you, I'm just saying-
No, no, I, I know, I know, I know, and that's okay, I don't mind, I got, you know, but I think the real point is that, um, uh, I call about the mums, we wanted to order the mums, they hadn't popped, so I was gonna wind up with nothing but rows of green stems. So, uh, just this week, they're coming in Saturday, uh, because they've popped, they'll be, uh, yellow and, and red. No, it's, it's a fall season, and I think it's gonna be very nice. Uh, as far as the nine eleven goes, uh, nine eleven to me is a very, very solemn time, it's a very special time in this village, as you're well aware. I happen to think personally that it's the most poignant, most respectful and dignified ceremony, probably in the state of New York, I'll give you that.
I would refer to the memorial.
Yeah, so, uh, it's really important that we remember that as well, uh, notwithstanding petunias and/or mums. But I agree with you, and then we hired, we finally took five years, I hired, finally got the person that supposedly did all this designing, including nine eleven, and, uh, it's been very difficult, talk about fishing, I'm still trying to catch her, and, uh, she's been here for meetings, and it's really, I mean, I can't get over it, I'm in business thirty-seven years, and I, I shudder to think what's gonna happen in the next five years in this area with trades, it's disgusting. Having said that, we're also talking about up, upgrading some of the playground equipment in Crane Park, uh, permanent bathroom structures around the pond, possibly the Airplane Park, and again, you know, you talk about the permanent bathroom structures, great idea, right? Nice to have things permanent. Do you know that the Village of Monroe, and I, and I don't want to go in the weeds over this, but we, we have bathrooms out here, portable potties or whatever like that, we actually pay per month extra two hundred dollars to clean the facing inside of them. If you could, can you wrap your head around that? I would, I can't. I'd like to catch 'em. Oh, I would, and I struggle with that, I'm not gonna kid you. And then, of course, dredging the ponds, which is really big for us. So, those are the kinds, this is what's come from these five people, we definitely wanna hear from the thirty-some odd folks that are here as well, including you, Robert, you're welcome to Opine, uh, and I, and I, I would really appreciate any comments while the public hearing is open. And it's gonna stay open, and it's, it's a very fluid thing, so we're, we're open for that. Anybody, please?
Dredging the pond, what point do you start and how long does it take?
Well, we're, we're hoping that come spring, we're going to have the South Pond completed. The, the permitting, uh, the, the scope of work is just about done, the permitting process will take about ninety days, I'm told. So, about the new year, we'll go out to bid, and then part of that bid structure will be to be able to come in and do that work. Uh, everybody's aware of what we're doing, the DEC is well aware of that project and has given the green light on some of what we're doing, but they have to permit the permit process. And, uh, there's two technologies, one's hydraulic and one's mechanical. If we dry the pond out, we mechanically go in, dig it up and put it to the shore. If we do it hydraulically, uh, we actually pump out the slurry, which is the silt bed as well as any water, and they basically put it into sausages up on the, on the, on the slopes, and then they allow it to de-water, and when it gets ready, they slice it open, it's biodegradable, and then we go ahead and change the grade. We believe that we can support everything that's in the spoils, 'cause that's also part of the DEC regulation. We have to manage the spoils in only one place. So, we can't just say, "Hey, what do you need, ten yards? No problem, here you go." We can't do that. They want it in one, one home. And so, we're gonna take the South Pond and put the spoils on the South property, and kinda re-contour the grade, and it can support it based on the analysis and the square yards. I think there's, um, seventeen thousand cubic yards coming out of the South Pond. Uh, it'll be cut down another two feet, and, uh, and I think it's gonna help, uh, in a lot of reasons, both in the vegetation, the, the weed problem we have, and then, of course, downstate, uh, in, in Rockland County and into New Jersey, they drink that water through processing, but they do. So, you know, we're, we're focused on that.
So, is this a one-time event, or you have to address it every five or ten years?
Well, it's a very expensive event, uh, so, uh, I don't think it's ever been done, I think we concurred on that.
Never been done.
Never been done, you know, uh, I know when they, they built the pond, uh, the Parkway, uh, Roscoe was out there with a team of people, and they found the mastodon out there in, in, inside the silt, and that was pretty cool. I don't know if that one is in- Museum Village? Or is it a harem, is it at Orange County? I know one's at Orange County Community College and one's here at, at Museum Village, I'm not sure who, who takes claim.
One up here, I think, is Harry. Harry, the man that's done it for Harriman.
Harriman.
Yeah. That came out from behind where the Marina's Pizza was, it was dug out of the swamp and wanted to be museum.
So, and that's just years and years of silt, uh, and they've, they've done a study where they actually go in and they, they take what's called a split spoon, and they go down in there and they pull out, and they open it up, and they see what layer's in there, and, uh, so obviously it's never been done, and they say if you get to this layer, you're in good shape. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, yes?
Is that going to affect the animals, like the creatures, the birds and the, and the crane, and, I mean, so inadvertently, that for a while, do you know what they're gonna do with them?
Uh, I don't know that answer, to be frank with you, I don't, uh-
They'll go up to the North Pond.
Yeah, they may go up to the North Pond, yeah.
They'll go up to the North Pond.
I think, yeah, I think whatever's gonna be going on in there is gonna be enough of a, of a, of a disruption in their life that they'll probably move on either to Round Lake, Walton, maybe Osteo Park, you know, and then come back.
Yeah, and I just want, 'cause it's so important for, for nature, you know, which is so important to general, and by the way, I know this is a separate thing, but the, uh, the chestnuts are needed, without them we don't have oxygen and life, they don't have sea, they don't have water life, and I do know about those things. So, the water chestnuts, you know, and when the boat's all they want, water chestnuts are needed. But, um, can I also add something about my, something on my street, or this is a different topic?
Well, there'll be a public comment at the end-
Okay.
And you're welcome to, and I encourage that.
Right.
Okay?
Right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else regarding the downtown initiative that they think, "Hey, this, I think this'd be a great idea," something like that? You shaking your head yes, do you have an idea?
I agree with you.
Oh, okay. It's, it's a very robust thing, listen, ten million dollars, a lot of money.
I do have one suggestion-
Yeah.
And this not only applies to the town, but to the lake on top of the hill. You get a lot of birds down here, a lot of geese, and what do they do when they go into the water, what we do when we go into the restroom?
Yes.
And those are polluting your, your ponds-
Yes.
And giving you those weeds. I can tell you, I was out walking by the lake on Friday, there were over fifty birds coming in for the evening. So, um, you gotta look at that and how you're gonna manage that down here also.
So, we actually are trying to manage it, we've hired a firm to come in and, uh, do their business, the USDA, uh, to manage the birds. There, it's, talk about invasive, invasive species, I suppose they're all necessary, but that is a big challenge here, and, uh, this is year two, I think, year two, Kim?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, we're working on it, it's, it's, again, it's a very fluid thing.
Didn't they at one time grease the eggs, go in the, in-
Oil them.
-pond and grease the eggs one year?
Yeah, they, they oil them.
They oil them with vegetable oil.
Oh, sorry.
They still do that, they oil them with ve-
Do they?
Yeah.
And they kinda, they do, they have a whole bunch of technologies they employ, uh, but it's not, not always easy, because where they nest, maybe you don't see it, maybe they're hiding, they're very good at what they do. Uh, so, we have a team, they were just here today, uh, doing something probably later in the season, 'cause I guess there's a couple of seasons where they do their business. Uh, so, you know, it's a challenge, is my, my point, and I, and I don't disagree with that one at all. You know, people walk their dogs around the lake, right? Not all, not all of them are good stewards, and frankly, I would say to, if I had to throw a number at it, I'd say maybe sixty percent pick up after their animal? Eleanor and I, actually, we were at nine eleven.
About that, when I was planning, at one time, there was a woman that-
Woman, that's right.
I, I told you at that time, the woman just let the dog do its business in front of me, and I said to her, "Are you gonna clean it up?" And she says, "I have nothing to clean it up with." I said, "Well, you can't leave it there, it's right in front of my face." And she said, "Tell them to-"
Yeah, so that's a shame.
I was totally floored, I couldn't-
So was I. So was I, 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 and I think a kid from the South Bronx wouldn't get shocked anymore, and I still, to this day, get shocked. Just blows me away.
Maybe one, maybe one thing we could add, are those-
They stole them.
The bags.
They stole them. They stole them.
Yeah, they stole all the bags, yeah.
I mean, I keep them in my car, I try to keep them there.
Yeah, 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 they stole them, so. Okay, uh, if there's no...
That's the way to keep the dogs out of the park, that's what you have to do.
Well, that was brought in by the prior administration, yeah, yeah, and, and I won't disagree with you, I, I don't own a dog. I think sometimes when I see some of the interaction between a crossing of a couple of animals, uh, it, it gets me a little nervous, uh, you know, but that's not my world, and... It was brought on by the prior administration, uh, back, I think, also in two thousand and eleven, so, um...
I thought a dog park would help, but when I talk to people, they don't even know there is a dog park.
I have to tell supervisor Cardon...
I need to advertise that a little bit more, so people will use it.
Yeah.
I've used the dog park, and if they don't put up lights sometimes, and if everybody's over there, a lot of people using drugs, I don't wanna go there. And also, there's, it's on rock, they could put some grass, and I know about the money that was donated for it a long time ago, and dogs have a right, they're not just service dogs. So if people take care of them, they have a right to walk that pond. I think we all have to be much more conscious of, of our creatures and nature, especially now, we're having a real problem with this earth. And I do know about these things, so those are things I can help with, and down the road, I would.
Sure, I think actually, uh, the park you're referring to is up over Park Avenue?
The one by the Mason Temple and Park.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, I wouldn't go away there either. But, but the town, the town did a beautiful job, Eagle Scout up there, a really nice young man, did it as his, uh, his Eagle Scout project, did a beautiful job. He really did, and, um, the, uh, the park up here, uh, needs to be renovated, uh, there was some attempts, it's actually run by the, uh, Park Commission at Smiths' Clove Park. And there's some new administrators now, and I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to now, again, work together, as supervisor Cardon suggested we should do, and, 'cause he's also part of that team. And hopefully, we'll find a way to do that, because that park does need work, I agree. It's too desolate. So, anyway, if there's anything further, yes, sir?
I have a question about the, um, uh, shelter for the bus, the gear bus.
Sure.
I was just wondering how extensive you want to make that, if it was perhaps fifteen people, um, listening to you talk about struggling with, uh, finding parking in the winter with the snow. I was wondering if you were considering in future perhaps expanding to be a, uh, car shelter as well? The thinking that I have on that is, if it's a large enough footprint, perhaps there's an opportunity for the town, village to be putting solar panels on top of the car shelters. It's, it's quite a large footprint, the, uh, park, so I was just a bit curious if you could talk more about the, uh, plan for the bus shelter.
So, yeah, so, uh, just imagine if, if you, uh, were driving on Mill Pond heading toward the airplane. Uh, there's two commuter lots, so your first is a private lot owned by that property owner where Beck's Hardware is, and the second and the third are the Village of Monroe's property. So if you go to the first one, and you were to actually take the bus and just turn it off and be within the curb line, the width of a bus. On that side where the bus would open up its door, there'd be a sidewalk, that would directly take you right into their parking. That's what I hope, that maybe we could find a way to engineer that, so that they're off the road and that they're using that spot, because believe it or not, again, I'm not shocked, uh, where the Beck's parking lot is, that's where the commuters park. And you know why? 'Cause that's where they get the bus. So they're not interested in walking that sixty feet, they wanna walk ten. So I wanna help them. Yeah, and allow the commerce to go back into Beck's.
So would it just be a redesign of the sidewalk, or is there a shelter?
Right now, yes. It's a very expensive process, uh, I think it was estimated about sixty thousand dollars to do. So, uh, we're encouraging shortline and coach, uh, to get involved with us, so hopefully, something comes out of that. But hopefully, maybe this DRI does also answer that, and maybe it answers some of what you just said, which is more of extensive work. 'Cause we, we're really limited here, I mean, it's amazing, this parking lot is loaded out here, you can't get in and out, the parking spots are all loaded, you know, it's, it's a challenge. Busy, it's a busy little village. So, okay, um, if nothing further, I'd like to, uh, uh, close that, a motion to close the downtown discussion at this time. This ca- this'll continue on, by the way, there'll be minutes on it, and it's an ongoing project.
Berenger will make the motion?
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you. Okay, uh, next order of business is the, uh, approval of meeting minutes of September sixth, can I get a motion, please?
Ferraro will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger abstain?
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business is the budget transfers and modifications that are submitted by the treasurer, I need a motion to accept.
Carl will make that motion.
Berenger will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you.
Mayor, I just got one thing on the department reports, and I, I think I might know what the answer is, but I'll ask Catherine. Uh, on the significant activity revenues, the recreation concessions, the thirty-four thousand nine eighty-two?
That's the carnival?
That's the carnival, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that was our total, or was there, was there additional monies on top of it?
Additional, because some of it received in July, so that the deposit was important.
Okay, very, very good, thank you.
Yeah, if you could share that with the board, Catherine, please, thank you. It was probably our, I think it was our best carnival yet, since the carnival's begun. We have a good relationship, uh, with the carnival operator. Okay, uh, did we do first and second, uh, did I call a question on that? No, did I get a, did I? Anybody? I did?
Yeah.
You did?
Okay, next order of business, uh, extension of hours, I don't think that's applicable?
He's, he completed his, uh...
Yeah.
Last Friday, we just had to, uh, we ran a little over with the, um, with the weeds and the time, so...
So do we need to make, uh, a motion, uh, to extend the hours? What did we put down for, uh...
Put until the week prior, or the seventh, like, from the seventh, people put it until the seventh of September. They had to do an MSD to extend it to sixteen.
Okay, so, uh, I need a motion to extend the hours, uh, for the part-time seasonal laborer, uh, from September seventh through September sixteenth.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor, Osaka.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry. Next order of business, the appointment of part, uh, part-time dispatcher for the Monroe P.D., trustee Berenger?
Be resolved, the Board of Trustees appoints Richard Haley as a part-time dispatcher. All of the necessary paperwork has been completed, his effective date of hire is September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at an hourly rate of twenty-three dollars sixty-four cents. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please?
Carl will second.
For the discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business is the part-time appointment, police officer, school resource officer, F Armstrong, trustee Berenger?
Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of Police Chief Guzman and approves the appointment of Francis Armstrong to the position of part-time police officer, school resource officer, except, effective September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, at an hourly salary of thirty-five dollars ninety cents per hour. Preapproval from the Orange County Department of Human Resources. Required department application, physical, drug screening, psychological, and background investigation has been completed through the Orange County Department of Human Resources. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please?
Carl will second, uh, just discussion.
Sure.
Chief, how many, um, school resource officers do we have, five?
That's correct, uh, he would be the fifth part-timer, we have one full-timer.
Okay. And that full...
Total six, one full, and five part-timers.
And the full-timer is paid by the school district, correct?
That is correct, that'd be awesome of you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a second?
Ferraro, second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you.
I already seconded it for discussion.
I'm sorry, okay, I missed that, all right, let's...
Yeah, I did, I seconded for discussion.
Yeah, okay, uh, I need to, uh, get a motion to accept the department reports as submitted by the department heads?
Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor will second it.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you. Okay, next order of business, uh, four B, adoption of local law ten of two thousand and twenty-two, amending chapter two hundred zoning to vest authority to perform the Monroe balancing test in the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees. I need a motion?
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Any further discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you. Next order of business is an amendment to the access control system with N.A.S. security, trustee...
Ferraro? Resolved, the Board of Trustees authorizes an amendment agreement with N.A.S. security to include additional parts and labor, including one high-powered RF receiver, ten wireless-one-button pendants, and one table, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars, to be allocated from budget line A, one-six-two-zero, point-four-five-two-zero, Village Hall Maintenance, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the adoption of local law number nine, the modification to chapter one ninety-five, you just need to table that.
Okay, I need a motion to table the adoption of local law number nine of two thousand and twenty-two.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Carl, and then...
Carl and O'Connor. And I was a five-oh. Okay. Very good, uh, next order of business is the bond reduction, Spring Hill Apartments. Excuse me. Yep.
At the end of the meeting, I can also ask another question about where I live?
Sure, absolutely.
What do I ask now?
No, no, in public comment.
Sorry?
In public comment, we're gonna finish the villagers' business, and then there'll be a portion there.
Sorry, I had to...
No, no, that's good, yes, no worries, good. Okay, bond reduction, Spring Hill Apartments, resolved, the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of villagers' engineer, John O'Rourke, P.E., and approve the request for a bond reduction for Spring Hill Apartments for the work, remaining to two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, noting that most of the items in the bonds are near completed, the withheld amount is due to ongoing construction activities and remaining work. I need a motion to accept the recommendation by our, uh, engineering firm, John O'Rourke, of Lang and Tully, uh, in this bond reduction.
Berenger will make the motion?
Carl will second for discussion.
Yep.
Uh, according to the letter from Lang and Tully from John O'Rourke, P.E., um, based upon the above, and if acceptable, to the village water and highway superintendents, um, have we gotten any, anything in writing from them that they're, um, they're in agreement with this?
No, okay, so we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna table this, and tomorrow morning, that's your first, get it, get in touch with them, okay, thank you, trustee Carl. Okay, next order of business, JCAP grant application filing for the Village of Monroe Justice Court. Uh, JCAP is the, uh, is the legal, uh, entity that the court follows in the state of New York. Uh, the judge, Judge Strauss, has offered us an opportunity to file an application for a grant, uh, for product and, and services here in the Village, uh, Hall Business. And, uh, so I'd just like to read this, the Village Monroe Justice Court is requesting authorization from the village board to apply for funding from the Justice Court Assistance Program, JCAP, during the upcoming grant cycle. So be resolved, the Board of Trustees authorize the Village Monroe Justice Court to apply for JCAP grant, court, uh, Justice Court Assistance Program for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three grant cycle, for the amount up to thirty thousand dollars. I need a motion to, uh, permit the, uh, judge to...
Ferraro will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry. Uh, next order of business, trustee Ferraro?
Resolved, the Board of Trustees declares the following clerk's office non-working equipment surplus, and of no value, and authorizes removal from inventory and disposal as junk. Dell computer, Optiplex, seven-four-four, zero, AJO, serial number CC nine-B-G two-two, Epson check reader model M-two-three-six-A, serial number KE-eight-F-zero-one-six-four-eight-zero. Uh, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye, so carry, thank you. Uh, just a couple of quick things, I, I kinda spoke on it a moment ago, um, just, uh, last week, we had our nine eleven, uh, ceremony on Sunday. Uh, it was very, very poignant and very special, uh, having the Monroe Berry School District, uh, involved is really, really special. Uh, each year, they improve upon that, and I say improve, it's not even a good word, but they, they, they grow with us, uh, on what they do. Uh, they're amazing young people, uh, that really, really enhance, uh, the memorial and the event of nine eleven, which everybody knows where they were and what they were doing that day. So I appreciated Monroe Berry, I'd like to say that, and I'd, I wanna thank the chief and his team for their participation, uh, this is a really big team effort. The interfaith, uh, community comes together under Pastor Maria Jones, and, uh, this year, we had, uh, Rabbi Pesach Burston, who just opened up his, uh, Habad on Gilbert, uh, and, uh, it was really nice to have him there as a new addition to our group. Uh, and, uh, and I'm really, really, really happy about that, and I know the board, uh, really, uh, it's, it's a special place, and it's a special time, uh, for us. The day before, we had our Cheese Fest, uh, and that was just amazing, uh, that was put together in seven short weeks, uh, uh, Lynn Seer had come together and asked me, uh, could they do it? And I said, you think you could actually pull this off? And she said, I think so. So I said, all right, well, show me the deliverals, deliverables, give me some scale of what you looked at, what you wanna try to do, and she worked together with some of the old data with the clerk had, and, 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 you know, uh, we had a Founder's Day back when I first became mayor. So we took some of that, and, and they stitched together a really great program, uh, the Building Department, Police Department, and DPW all approved it, and it was a great event. People said it was just the best they've ever seen, and that's the first time out of the box, the music was amazing, it's right up here in town, it was really great, and we were all there, and, and very special. Uh, I think that's all I have right now. Trustee Berenger?
I agree that it was the best cheese festival, and several people, um, told me how much they loved the nine eleven ceremony, and I do think the music was, uh, a lot of what made it really great. Uh, we are currently working on a Halloween event for October twenty-ninth, um, the, the village board is working with the Y and Smiths' Clove Park, so keep your eye out for that event. That's all I have for now.
Bro?
Nothing.
Bro?
Um, I should, I didn't have the data yet, but, um, Alan Prince, our weed, uh, weed harvester operator, um, has been doing a log, and he's gonna send, send me all the... He's able to tell the tonnage of how much he, he pulls in in weeds, um, by, by the pontoons on the boat, so, uh, when, once I get that, I will share that with the board.
Great, thank you very much. And, uh, and then also, too, last night, uh, was a great, uh, presentation, I know you put in an amazing amount of work into that, and I appreciate it, and I know the board does...
Team effort, I mean, I think, you know, I think everybody, everybody in this room, I mean, it's, uh, you know, without water, what are you? So we gotta, uh, we gotta, uh, we gotta, we gotta take care of ourselves.
Trustee O'Connor, any?
I have nothing.
Great, okay, counsel, do you have anything right now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And water restrictions, we still are in water restrictions, and, uh, I hate to let heck to say this, but I'm hoping one of those hurricanes doesn't hook, uh, just comes up to shore and kind of fills us back up. Uh, we're, we're still, we're still two feet low.
When I was a kid, we used to take boards and put them down, and we used to walk from East Novation to the island, that's how low the water was. I mean, and I mentioned it to Neil, that's what I said to him, you know, you gotta watch out for the water, because when I went out there, I mean, you could see the rocks and everything being spattered.
Yep.
But it could get worse, I mean, I remember in the forties and the fifties, when we used to go almost to the other side.
Well, we've had, uh, we've probably, uh, between warnings and violations, we've probably violated two dozen people. And I'm not talking about, you know, maybe life and safety, I'm talking about washing the car, watering the dormant lawn.
But I think people have been pretty good, I don't think they've been washing their cars, I don't think they've been watering them, I mean, I have watered my lawn, and God, I don't know how long.
Yeah, mine's really crispy, actually, it's crunchy.
Crunchy.
Yeah, 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 I get you, but you'd be surprised, Eleanor. So anyway, having said all that, um, we come to the public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, come on up to the mic, give us your name, and, uh, uh, please, uh, offer your comments in the best intent, we appreciate that.
I live on three Freeland Street by Cumberland Farms, and it is in...
Virginia Zaleski, Wood Zaleski.
Um, three Freeland Street by Cumberland, and it is an accident waiting to happen, I know, we all know that. When I pull out of my driveway, although it's the first house there, I have to look at least eight different ways, that is unheard of. And I have a great idea, and I think it was proposed a long time ago by other people on that street, I really think if we could close off that street just for people who live there, we would get people going through the town to bring in more business. People would go on the other side of town to go to stop and shop, that would bring in more business for Harriman, and I know it, I, it sounds difficult, but we gotta do something. I mean, I see people, and by the way, they speed, they speed, you cannot imagine, they sit at that light, and they rev their motor at twelve o'clock at night, I've called the police about it, they play loud music, it is horrendous, and they... It is horrendous, and they do that in Cumberland Farms, too. I mean, it's, I'm real easygoing. It's unlivable. And I just hope there might be something else we can do about that, that particular street. Also, I have to tell you, my water two or three times in the past two years, the smell is horrendous. I asked the water company to come over. They did fix a pipe in front of my house, but when I know that people are talking about our, our water being, you know, I know how they test, I know what they do. It's just something that I'd like to pass by you to know. Um, but if there's anything that I can do to help on that street, I would, I would do it. And also, is, do we have a Monroe Community Center? I know there's one right next door. I just saw it for the, the Jewish center. Is there a Mon- Monroe Community Center? Do we? I would love to help start something like that. I have young people from a long time ago that maybe I knew when I was in Rockland County and have been recently saying, "Could you please do something to help us with dances or to get together, including seniors, including, you know, there must be empty buildings somewhere that, that we can look to or something that we can help with." I think it would be just great joy and, and if there's anything-
YOCA has a lot of programs out there as well.
Yeah.
Different stuff.
Not here.
Yes, it was.
I went to the one in, at the Y and-
Burned down.
Believe me, unless it's, I have to honestly say, unless it's true, you know, they were very rude. They were not, they were not kind about much of anything. You know, it's unless they're doing some sort of aerobics, uh, you know, I'm talking about a community center where the town can get together and we can do more for the people in the town.
Yeah.
But also on my street, on Freeland, no lights, no paint on the side of the road. They speed. I mean, I came out of my driveway and I get a ticket. I've had it happen a few times because my back light was out. And yet people are speeding on that road, and I sold lights for New York State a long time ago. I know the lighting is out there. And by the way, I didn't get a commission for it. That's another story. I sold the lighting. I sold the paint for the side of the roads. I know what's out there. They were even going to put up barriers for animals that were gonna be friendly barriers, and they're made. I know the companies who made them. I still have the purchase orders from twenty-five years ago. So I'm just saying, it's, it's really not good. When I go on that street, it's so dark. And people, the people from Curious Joe walk with, you know, their black coats and, and not a light around. I mean, if somebody hits them, it's not the person, it's not our fault who's driving. I have to honestly, I mean, that's, it would be a horrible thing, but, you know, maybe we could put some more information out there for everyone.
So, uh, regarding the lighting, real quick, uh, trustee Carl, myself have been working on, we're replacing all the lights in the village.
Thank God, good.
They're all the LED. They'll be modulated, so if, let's say, you say, "Hey, it's a little dim tonight." I could, from my phone, just, rrrr, ramp you up.
Wonderful.
And so forth. So that's coming, all right?
Oh, wonderful.
So we're right now in the final stages of, we've already gone out to procurement. We put it out to bid, and hopefully, uh, within a very short time, that's gonna begin to happen.
That is wonderful. I'm so glad about that.
What road are you looking to close?
Freeland, right across the street.
Road itself?
The street I'm on is Freeland. It's right across the street from Cumberland, right next to Key Bank. So when they come out of Key Bank, they come out of-
You mean northeast?
Uh, northeast, sorry. Northeast. When they come out of that bank, they come out of Cumberland. People are coming through the light. They're passing me or the people on the right, which they shouldn't be doing. Some are passing on the left. They're coming out from where, uh, it used to be, um, oh my goodness, the, I forget who it was now, the Royal. Europe Royal used to own that next to Cumberland.
Oh, Royal's, yeah, yeah.
So it's like, and then in Cumberland, they're pulling out from three different sides on Cumberland. So it, I mean, I, I don't know how, so far, thank God, there hasn't been an accident, but it's too much.
There's been some accidents there.
Yeah, and if we, there's, I think if they could just, in Cumberland, if they could pull in from seventeen, they don't have to pull in and out on my street. They, there's plenty of room to do that by the bank. There's plenty of room to pull in and out of one driveway. They don't have to have all those driveways. I mean, it's, it's really fixable, and, and I've sat and watched it and spoke to other people. If there's, you know, anything else that I could do, I'm just, I'm frightened to cross the street. And believe me when I tell you they speed, they speed. So, uh, and but I've walked the pond a lot, and today, people were speeding by that pond. The beautiful little geese were going over in lines, and they, and I actually put my hand up, and I'm thinking, is there anything, maybe they could put a, like, a light or something, or just something that might say, "Slow it down, it's a park."
I used to roll a ball into the street.
I'm sorry?
I used to roll a ball into the street.
That's probably a good idea.
It was effective.
Honestly, it's probably a good idea, but it was, it's sad to see how they, you know, and if you just wait, just stop because they're all walking across. People wanna go like this to you or do things.
I know.
But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to? Please.
My name is Alex Rivera. I just wanted to address the, uh, this whole thing with Ry Hill. I recognize it's in another geography, the town of Monroe. But doesn't the village have to approve the water source? Everyone's talking about a impending vote. The town board member is about to make a vote. Now it's put on hold as of yesterday. But the bottom line is, do they control our destiny? If they vote five out of five to do it, don't they need to tap your water source? And if so, 'cause, you know, I have a friend who's a math professor at Cornell, and he said, you know, it's, your lake level is down twenty-four inches, and it's three hundred forty-eight acres. He said, "Well, one acre inch of liquid, one acre inch of liquid is seventeen thousand gallons. Just multiply by how many inches it's down, times twenty-four, then multiply it by how many acres, three forty-eight." You know, you guys are down year over year, two hundred sixty-one million gallons. And my last comment is, and he said, he goes, "Tell the board of the village, tell them that if you hook up to Ry Hill, the situation is definitely not gonna get better." 'Cause it's five hundred, four hundred ninety-one, but I'll round up to five hundred to make it easy. That's two bathrooms per unit. That's a thousand toilets every day flushing, a thousand showers running every day. So I agree with them. You, you can guarantee one thing, the situation is not gonna get better. So my question is, I hear, in fact, it's a fact, you guys own the water source. Can they just, uh, on their own, independently, make this decision and hook up to the water source?
No.
End of question.
No.
No, okay.
And, and, and who suggested? You just said somebody. You said, um-
A math friend.
No, my-
No, somebody suggested, uh, that, I don't know, you said something I caught. You said somebody suggested, and then you didn't say who.
Suggested.
I don't know. You said something about somebody-
Math, math friend from Cornell.
No, 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 that's-
No, 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 he helped me with the calculation.
No, no, it sounded like it was a town official or, it sounded like it was a town official or maybe somebody that spoke last night. I'm just trying to clarify.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Earlier, I heard, I didn't attend it, and I have not read the meeting, meeting minutes, but, uh, apparently, um, the Ry Hill project or file or case is temporarily on hold.
Okay.
Why it was put on hold, uh, the person who was my source that attended there, that there were incomplete, the application was incomplete, or that the builder or the lawyer for the builder had not yet resolved some of the open issues. So they can't vote if, if there's open-ended issues.
So somebody at that point said, "Go ask the village," is what you said.
Oh, I didn't attend. I was just, I just wanted to know if they took it to vote, and they did not, and it's been postponed.
Okay.
That's the facts, and then, and why was basically, fortunately, because I attended the prior meeting, and the application was definitely incomplete, and a lot of the smart people on the board were saying, "Well, we are concerned about this, this. Get back to us with this." So I didn't attend yesterday's meeting, but apparently the board held them to it 'cause they didn't complete some of the things. My whole thing is, irrespective of whether or not they complete their project, the application is complete, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and they vote for it, they are, they have to connect to your water supply or build wells, correct?
Part of their project is gonna require that they find a viable source of water to support their project.
Right.
That may include coming to us and asking for it, but they have to come and ask us for that.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we'll be in that process then, the lake coming to you, the, the formal meetings then, like, do you get, how involved, who gets to manage the water?
All right, so, so just, just, so everyone understands that the village's, village's responsibility is to preserve the water for the use of the village of residents. They have the authority to provide water to outside users. Uh, the normal, the normal process would be that the outside user would ask the village to provide water. The village would determine whether it should or should not and, and can say no or yes.
Like, in place, like, future restrictions, like, you already have a plan, says, we know what the future capacity of our wells is gonna come, what the reservoir can handle. Like, you know, that four hundred, six hundred, a thousand over the next ten years. Do you have a ten-year plan?
As far as what, the quantity?
Water supply itself and knowing how many hookups you can support.
Projected consumption.
So you don't really know that. I'll let trustee Carl, he's, he's the water guy, speak about it, but-
Yeah, Monbeishaw Lake, the safe yield and the water-taking permit that's been issued by the DEC is one point five million gallons a day. That's the most that can come out of that lake. We have a well down in, um, Smith Clover Park that unfortunately this summer we had to shut off a lot because it's a shallow well, it's a sand and gravel well, and with the drought, uh, we were only able to run that well a couple days a week. Um, when the aquifer is full, um, we can pump three hundred fifty gallons a minute, and we can do that eighteen, twenty hours a day with no problem. This summer, um, we were running about two days a week at a hundred fifty gallons a minute. So we were relying heavily on the reservoir. So the filtration plant and, um, anybody that, um, attended the meeting last night, y- you heard that we're running right now about one point two, one point three million gallons a day from the reservoir. So we're just about at our maximum withdrawal up there for the DEC permit that we have.
Around forty-seven hundred houses?
No, it-
Well, it's three thou-, there's three thousand connections on the system, but in those three thousand, some of them are town water districts, which, you know, that connection may feed, you know, fifty, six, sixty, seventy homes, similar to like, uh, High Ridge, um, up in Skyview Hills in the back. That's another district that, that comes off of our system as well. So, um, all told, we're about twelve thousand five hundred people, give or take, that utilize Village of Monroe water.
Can I ask a question? Can you stop people from getting water, anybody that builds new buildings and tell them they have to put a well?
Well, well, he, he, here's what happens when an applicant, uh, first of all, we do have vacant parcels here in the village, um, that have rights to the water because they're, 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 they're within the village. Um, what happens is, when an applicant comes before the planning board, um, water consumptions are looked at when the project goes to the county health department because the county health department has to approve it. So if somebody's putting a housing development in and they're running mains, and where are you getting your water from? And if they're, if they're looking to go on a municipal system, the county health department also, you know, is checks and balances for the village as well. Because they'll look and say, "Listen, you guys are getting close to capacity." Um, and, and, and they'll give us a write, you know, they'll give us a written letter basically telling us, "You're, you're close to capacity." So the board's gotta act on that because we've gotta take care of our village residents first.
Can I ask you another question? They, they, I don't know if this is fact or fiction, but a couple of people have told me that when the civic's health department, on a Friday night, Friday night through Saturday, they need to water running because they can't shut it off.
I, I think that's speculation. That's, that's better not, that's speculation that really isn't appropriate for this board.
Wait, the four hundred fifty ought to be a fifteen, about three percent increase in the number of houses drawn. So, can, it was three percent, one point three million, that's about your maximum capacity.
We're, we're, we're getting, we're getting close to, we're getting close. And again, we've got, we have, we have, we have undeveloped parcels here in the village that, you know, we're obligated to, um, to supply them.
They have first, first dibs on that.
Absolutely.
That's right. Yeah.
And also, if the, if the water restrictions were to go to the next stage, we're in stage one now, correct? If we have to go to stage two, the first thing that happens is, um, outside water, outside village users are the first ones. They have to cut their, they've gotta cut their water consumption. And that's where it starts, and that's where the town would have to knuckle down on all those that get village water because they're the, they're the first ones that, that get affected by it. And then, then slowly it comes back into the village where you can't as much as water a bush anymore. Right now, it's lawn irrigation. You can water your ornamental shrubbery, but that stuff will all stop. So, and, you know, I, I, I'm up on that, I'm up on that reservoir, um, five days a week, and it's, and it's getting, it's, uh, you know, it's a concern. It's a concern. I know when I worked, um, I worked, I worked for the Village of Monroe from nineteen seventy-seven to eighty-five, and I, I've seen the lake lower than that, but we didn't have as many users back then. Now you got a lot more users, and the lake is dropping. So it's, um, you know, it's, we're cognizant of it.
Anyone else in the public?
I'd like to thank the board for the music that they had in the village over the summer. It was really cool.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. It's, it's a great opportunity to bring the community together again. Absolutely. Uh, we had taken a, a, a video, I did actually. I said, "Can I film?" There's this couple dancing. They were doing, we had a, um, uh, I, I won't say that they were definitely a Latino band, and, uh, there was this couple dancing, and I said, "Can I video you?" "Sure, go ahead." I think that thing got something like nine or ten thousand hits. It just connects with people, you know, and, and that's what makes us really special here. Thank you. Okay, anything else in the public? If not, uh, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into attorney-client, uh, and I'm gonna thank you all ahead for coming in tonight. Thank you.
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
O'Connor, so carried, thank you.